Views and opinions expressed in this program are those of the participants and do not necessarily reflect the views of BronxNet or the program underwriters.
Good evening. I am BronxNet reporter Sanji Lopez.
And I'm Michael Hinman, editor of the Riverdale Press. Tonight, we will moderate the first televised debate among the candidates for New York City Council, District 11.
The 11th Council District includes a number of neighborhoods in the Bronx, including Bedford Park, Kingsbridge, Norwood, Riverdale, Wakefield, and Woodlawn Heights.
With the resignation of Andrew Cohen at the end of last year, Mayor Bill de Blasio has set a special election for March 23rd to fill the final year of his term. The winner of that special election, and many of the candidates you meet tonight, are expected to return for a June primary where voters will have a chance to decide who will represent the district beginning in 2022.
Tonight's debate, a partnership between BronxNet and the Riverdale Press, is designed to help you, the voter, better understand the candidates in this race. Many choose not to participate in special elections like this more often than not because they aren't familiar with the people seeking their vote.
Elections like this are vital because decisions are made at the city level that affect everything from the taxes you pay, the laws you follow, and even the schools your children attend.
Now let's meet the candidates. Joining us for tonight's debate is Carlton Berkeley, a retired New York Police Department detective from Wakefield.
Eric Dinowitz, a special education teacher in the public school system from North Riverdale.
Jessica Holler, an environmentalist and entrepreneur from Fieldston.
Mino Laura, an executive director of a theater nonprofit from Spite and Dival.
And Dan Paternak, a real estate attorney from Kingsbridge Heights.
Tonight's debate consists of questions developed by Sanji and I in consultation with both the other producers of BronxNet as well as the Riverdale Press newsroom. None of these questions have been shared with the candidates in advance. Questions will be directed to a specific candidate who has two minutes to respond. We will then open the floor to the other candidates, allowing for free-flowing discussion for two additional minutes.
In order to keep that discussion as orderly as possible, we have asked the candidates to wait until they are called upon. As moderators, we do have a responsibility to ensure questions are being answered and that questions remain relevant to the original question asked. We also have the option to ask follow-ups when there is an opportunity to drill deeper or when we feel the question has not been answered.
As part of this debate, we have invited a few community groups to ask questions of the candidates. It will include those questions as we go. Candidates are asked to follow these same debate rules as if the question came from us.
Before we conclude our debate this evening, candidates will be offered one minute each to provide a closing statement.
And then be sure to stay with us right after the debate when I welcome a group of students from Lehman College to ask our candidates a few additional questions in a special town hall hosted by BronxNet.
One final disclaimer. Our debate was filmed on January 20th, 2021, and some aspects of our broadcast may have been edited without changing the context of any statements. Now that we have all of that out of the way, it's time to get to the questions. Michael?
Thank you so much, Sanji. We randomly chose our order for each round, and right now, we're going to start with Jessica Holler. Jessica, a few years ago, many in the community were upset about the opening of a transitional homeless facility on Broadway. There are some experts who believe once the eviction moratorium is lifted, the number of families finding themselves suddenly homeless is going to explode. How should city agencies decide where to open homeless shelters and transitional shelters and facilities? And how many should end up on this side of the Bronx? You've got two minutes.
Yeah, thank you, Michael. It talks to equity. As I'm walking around and going to the different seven, the seven different neighborhoods in our district, one of the things that strikes me is that Wakefield has a disproportionate share of homeless shelters in our district. They have 11. The conversation and arguments over the family shelter on Broadway brings to mind a phrase that I'd like to use in this, in this context, which is yimby. We have so much nimby going on, not in my backyard, please don't put it in my backyard, that we really need to flip it to, to yimby and say, yes, please, we'd like to welcome these people. We need, we need to welcome the families in our communities. I look at equitable distribution across our city as one of our major issues in our city today, and I would fight for equitable distribution of shelters across our district. And I believe we need to move some of them out of Wakefield and move them, you know, spread them across, across the Bronx in whatever way we can. And I would use stories, the, the fights over the Broadway family shelter ended up in happy stories with community groups supporting the families in the shelter, bringing Thanksgiving dinner, and ending up in, in not all of the nimby action that people were nervous about, but actually in the yimby that, yes, this actually enhanced our neighborhood.
Anyone else?
Yeah, if I may, so just kind of going on that aspect, you know, the homeless situation right now in New York City is daunting. You know, we, we dent the number, but it's really staying the same. So we really need a new approach to it. The way I feel, you know, what should be done is that we need to take a group home aspect to it, like we do with other services. That way, we can actually spread out the housing across the city of New York and within districts. Down on Broadway, that was, you know, roughly, I think it was 83 families that we put in there. And essentially, it drew like huge, you know, pushback from the community. I think that we can do lower. I think that we can do smaller. And I'm glad to hear Ms. Holler do that because I think by doing the smaller group home concept, we could also put some shelters in Fieldston as well for more group homes and to ask, actually go throughout the entire district.
Okay, Eric?
Yeah, I agree with some of the things that are said, shelters spread out, but I, I think the shelter system is a symptom of a bigger problem, and that is our housing crisis. We need to ensure that affordable housing exists in our city because our priority should be keeping people in their homes and talking about why people are on the streets in the first place. I think we need to, you know, allow ancillary units, which allow people to use their single-family homes, their, their garages or their basements to allow people to rent that. I think when we build new housing, we really need to invest in truly affordable housing, not the current housing that's being built that is not affordable for our members, for our, our community members. And we need to expand right to council to all zip codes.
Thank you, Eric. Mino?
Yeah, I just want to say, I mean, let's remember that when we're talking about the homeless, our homeless neighbors, the majority of them are families with young kids. So this is a dire issue, and we, when we think about housing, it needs to be short-term and long-term. I agree that it's about keeping, keeping people in their homes, but the conversation can't just be about what exists in place that profits developers, right? The current city MIH, mandatory inclusionary housing, and at the state level, the tax abatements, they profit, they're about profits for developers, and we need to prioritize our families.
Thank you, Mino. Sanji?
We're moving on to our next question. Our next question.
I didn't get the answer. Hold on. I didn't get the answer.
Now, Carlton, we will, we will get to everybody. We'll try to get everybody. Not everybody's going to be able to answer every question. Go ahead, Sanji.
Disclaimer, if you want to answer a question, you should raise your hand so that we can call on you. Our next question is for Eric Dinowitz. Eric, your father is Assemblyman Jeffrey Dinowitz. If you were elected to this seat, it would mean both city and state representatives come from the same immediate family. How do you reassure voters that this is a positive and not a negative?
You know, first, you know, I want to make something very clear to everyone here. I am very proud of the representation that we have in our district, which includes my father. And I'm proud of the work my mother does in the community. But you know, when I'm, when I'm in the classroom as a public school teacher, you know, I am Mr. Dinowitz. My students don't care who my father is. When I am, when I'm rallying outside Montefiore Hospital for safe staffing ratios, they don't care who my father is. They care that they have a brother in labor who's standing with them. The workers at Kifu didn't care. They cared that they had someone there advocating for them against the fact that they were fired. And you know, like most people, like most fathers and sons, I disagree with my father on a number of things. You know, I think most recently, he and I disagreed on who our next president should be. You know, when I ran as a delegate for Elizabeth Warren, he ran as a delegate for Joe Biden. He and I have different views on high-stakes testing in our schools. And there are a number of different, of differences we have in our views, just like any two people have. But I am more interested in talking about the differences between myself and the other candidates here today.
All right, thank you, Eric. Anybody else that wanted to address this? Dan Paternak?
Thank you, Michael. You know, I'll, I'll simply say this, you know, without going into, you know, Eric's dad, I will, on a personal basis, just say that I, I just don't agree with the political dynasty within our own particular area. And, you know, I, I've worked with Eric's dad for a number of years, and their office, I will say, they do excellent constituent services. But on the point of the question that was asked, I just, you know, political dynasty within, you know, a father and son being elected officials in the same area, I do not believe is beneficial for our district.
Anybody else have anything they want to share? Jessica?
Yeah, I just don't think that using the same kind of thinking that got us into the issues that we're in is the kind of thinking that we need to get us out. And I'm looking for really, really new leadership and new kinds of thinking across the Bronx.
Carlton raises.
Thank you, Jessica. Carlton?
Yes, I, I concur. I, I don't think, you know, I don't think we need two people from the same family. I don't think it's good. I mean, people know Eric because of his father, and, and maybe that isn't a bad thing. But it does look, and it does touch into some parts of nepotism, all right? And I'm not saying it's bad in this, in, in this sense, but I agree too, we have his father. I don't think we need anybody else at this time. And I, and, and going back, and I'm shortening this up because I still want to go back to that first question about shelters. Well, Wakefield has been in a daunting with, with shelters, all right? It seems like everything comes over here. And I would like equitable distribution throughout the district. And I would like to know from the beginning, why is it that other areas, mainly two areas, don't have any? And I'm talking about Riverdale and I'm talking about Woodlawn, all right? Because it's not fair. I'm a homeowner, like a lot of people out here, and that's one of the number ones issues over here, shelters. And we have the Anis Place, and we have the 4747 on Bronx Boulevard. And with Anis Place, one of the, one of the residents murdered, murdered the director. All right, I just wanted to say that.
Yep. Thank you, Carlton. All right, moving on, we'll move on to the next question.
I believe that I'm allowed to.
No, there is, no. Just two minutes of, just two minutes of discussion. If you want to try to take some time in the next one, you can. The next question is, next question is to Dan Paternak. The winner of this special election will face a unique challenge. They will have just a couple of months to prove themselves to an electorate who will be asked once again in June to pick someone for the seat. But in that short period, this council member will be asked to represent their district in city budget negotiations. What is your top budget priority and how should we pay for it? Two minutes.
So my top budget priorities, you know, right now at the moment are, one, preserve housing. Right now, we have to deal with the fact that the moratorium is going to expire in May, and city HRA is going to have to step up in that aspect and support a lot of families to, to keep them in their homes. That's number one. Number two, we have a food crisis that we're facing in the city of New York right now. The way the numbers are looking, it, it seems as if one in five families may be in food crisis in, in very near term. That means families not knowing where their next meal is coming from. I want to make sure that within the city budget of what's happening, that money flows to the appropriate nonprofits and other organizations that are getting food to these neediest of individuals. Number three, I want to make sure that we have enough money for ancillary services within education to support a lot of the kids who, you know, I, I call getting lost at home right now with, with, you know, the, the at-home education. So those are going to be my three budget priorities, and that I want to make sure are funded to the appropriate agencies and to the appropriate places to get the funds there.
Dan, I saw Jessica's hand first.
Yeah, I, I think that we are not going to get through this crisis unless we look for new revenue opportunities. Hopefully, money comes in starting today from the federal government. Hopefully, the state helps out as well. But we need to look at floating bonds. Interest rates are really low. We can invest in infrastructure, and we can look at new revenue opportunities at the state level. And I have a couple of plans on that, but we are not going to get through this crisis just tightening our belts and, and contracting.
Mino?
Yeah, I'll just say, we are, there's an austerity budget, but we need to be very clear on what the, you know, the premise of the question, right? There is a deficit, and who does that impact in the community, right? Who are the ones that are always put on the line? So right now, yes, there is a deficit. The first thing for me a budget priority would be is first to claw back the $707 million that we cut from the education budget. That's essential. Expanding contracts with social services and funding the programs that are feeding our neighbors and keeping our families in place. And of course, taxing, we need to tax fair taxes that bring revenue to the state. And Legolas, my one, I will work closely with my state colleagues to be able to do that so that we have the revenue. We can bring in $11.3 billion into the city with fair taxes, and that's what we have.
Thank you, Mino. Eric?
Yes, so, so thank you for that question because you, you spoke about a few short months to prove yourself. But, you know, I've been an advocate in our community for a long time, standing up against cuts to our express bus service, standing up to, to cuts to banking services, standing up for our children and for our working, working families. And as part of the budget, we do need to increase our services to our children, both inside and outside the classroom. We need to make sure that our seniors are protected, especially with regard to having equitable vaccine distribution for them. And yes, it does include revenue, which is why I'm very proud of the work that I've done organizing phone banks for Democrats across the country and for our, our new president today, Joe Biden.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Eric. Sanji?
Yeah, I have.
Carlton had his hand up.
I know, but we're out of time. Not everyone's going to be able to answer every question, like we stated in the beginning. Go ahead, Sanji.
Alrighty, we now turn to Mino Laura. Woodlawn and Wakefield has some of the highest coronavirus positivity rates in the city. As someone who yourself recently recovered from COVID, we're glad to hear that you're feeling better, Mino, and looking well. But there are tremendous disparities across the council district when it comes to the coronavirus. Many of our most vulnerable, especially senior citizens, are facing difficult encounters with the virus, while wealthier areas seem to fare better. What, in your opinion, creates these disparities? And what can the city council do to create more parity when it comes to treatment and survivability of the coronavirus?
Racism. Racism creates disparities. Racism across all areas. It's systemic. We need to tackle poverty, and systemic racism infuses housing injustice, environmental injustice, and socioeconomic. So it is absolutely true that so much of our rates right now are higher in our lower-income communities. And there's a few things that we need to tackle. First, when we think about, right now, there are 700,000 New Yorkers that are uninsured. In our district, 41% have public health care. A significant number are uninsured and uninsured New Yorkers, undocumented New Yorkers. So the first thing is, while we pass the New York Health Act, I would make sure that every single New Yorker, I would educate, partner with local organizations to make sure that people know they qualify for emergency Medicaid, for New York City Care. And we need to then look at the public health issues. How are we making sure that there is, there aren't food deserts or food apartheid, and everybody has access to healthy foods? That we're living in safe homes with the dignity and respect that we deserve? And that people are being treated, have living wage? So it's all the intersectionality. Many of my students and people that I work with live five people to one bedroom that they rent, people that I love and care for. So it's difficult to separate and stay safe when you're not able to do that even within your own household. And access to healthcare, right now, my whole family, as you said, we had it. We don't have a doctor because our insurance company is in fights with the hospital, and all of our doctors were taken away. And we just went through COVID for two weeks, my two children, my husband and I, without a doctor. We got through it, but many do not have that opportunity, and we need to prioritize their health and their safety.
Thank you, Mino. Let's go to Carlton. Carlton?
Yes, now, I don't know, I don't know what, what Mina, maybe Mina knows something, Nina knows something better than me. I don't know if it's racism, all right? But I do know that it's not right for certain areas to have so much of the COVID. And I'm talking about, just two weeks ago, Woodlawn and Wakefield had the highest in the, in the state, definitely in New York City. And I can tell you, one of the reasons is because with these shelters that they open over here, right? The people are not getting the services that they deserve. They're walking around our neighborhood, no mask, they have nothing, and, and, and it's very, very dangerous, you know? And I did not like it, and it seems like we can't do anything about it, and that's why I'm running. But I don't want to say it's racism because I don't know if it's racism. But I tell you one thing, that if I get in there, I'm gonna look, I'm gonna look definitely into it, and I'm gonna make the necessary changes that need to be made.
Okay, thank you. Jessica?
In 19, during the flu pandemic, 100 years ago, science knew that people living around coal plants died at a higher rate from the flu. So here in the Bronx, we should not be surprised that communities living around infrastructure highways, Hunts Point, garbage transfer stations, bus depots are dying at a higher rate. I would say, Carlton, it's, it's historic environmental racism that put those infrastructure pieces there that are creating poor air quality and creating the underlying disproportionate health impacts, and we need to dismantle that.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan.
So what I would say is this, what we need to do is get folks back to work right now. It, it's economics. It's putting money in folks' pocket. And for those that can, you know, we need to generate the economy, especially on a local level, especially by helping small businesses. And there's many things that we can do to help small business for the neediest in our communities. We, we need to help them with supplements. We, we need to keep them on their feet right now. And I think when it comes down to it.
Thank you, Dan. So we're going to move on to our next question. This is for Carlton Berkeley. "It seems there's always been that difficult relationship between the police and the, the police and the people. They swear to serve and protect. State Attorney General Letitia James recently filed a lawsuit against the New York Police Department for excessive force and false arrests during Marches last summer, including one that took place here in the Bronx. This racial bias exists within the NYPD? And what could you do as a city councilman to help improve the relationship between a cop and a civilian?" And you've got two minutes.
Okay, well, well, certainly. Yes, there is a racial division within the NYPD and, and, and the black or minority neighborhoods. I joined the police force back in 1984, and I'm telling you, there's always been a problem. There's always been two types of policing, and we never should have that. It should only be one type of policing, and that policing should, should be for everyone. You guys don't really know what goes inside a police precinct. I can tell you that at times when I was inside the locker room, when it came to mental health, you would hear officers just blurt out and say, hey, you know, what, what happened in Brooklyn? I would have been shot, that guy. I would have been killed him. I don't care about it. His mother and father couldn't control him, and they called me. And then I would get into arguments with them, and I would say, but you know what? You wouldn't have handled that same situation if it was in, in your backyard. Look at what just happened with the insurrection at the White House, all right? And then they're finding out that some of those people that did that were police officers, court officers, right? Firemen, all right? This has always been a problem. Now, what would I, I do, right? I've been working with the police department for years. I go out in our neighborhood, I wrote a book about what to do when stopped by the police, to educate the community on how to interact with the police, all right? So you don't leave dead. You don't leave crippled, and you definitely don't leave put, put in jail. I've been doing that for almost 30 years. I've been a cop. I've, I've been retired 17 years. If elected to city council, I want that chairmanship because then I'll make NYPD have to listen to me and make their changes.
Thank you, Carlton. Eric?
First, just going back to previous question, Mino, we are all glad to see that you're feeling better and doing well. Regarding the NYPD, look, I, I have seen in the classroom, I taught over at the John F. Kennedy Campus and the Walton Campus, and my students, students of color would, would share stories with me. I want to say I've got a summons for using a student metro card at the wrong time. How many, how many of my students have been stopped and frisked on the way to school? Their parents inequitably treated by the police. There is a real problem with the NYPD. We need to make sure that their roles are clearly defined so that they're not getting involved with, with social services, with, you know, with mental health counseling. That is not their job. It shouldn't be their job. But we also need to ensure that there's real accountability. And I am proud to be endorsed by Senator Jamal Bailey, who was a real force behind repealing 58, which shielded police misconduct records. I believe we need to give the Civilant Complaint Review Board authority to really take action against police so that, that there really is accountability when there is misconduct.
Thank you, Eric. Mino?
We need to defund the NYPD, and I'll tell you what that means. We need to divest millions of dollars away, and we do that by streamlining their job descriptions, right? Streamlining the responsibilities, like Eric said, I agree. Homeless outreach, mental health, as Carlton was saying, clear examples that he had seen and witnessed as, as a police officer. Social services, domestic violence, all of these things should be done for someone else. There is a bill right now to, at the Senate, and our Senator Biagi has put it forward, it's in committee, for even to, looking at traffic cops. We need to limit the exposure between our communities and our communities of colors and the cops because they result in murder and violence.
Yeah, I think number one, we have to bridge the gap with NYPD, and understand that as a council member, we're going to have to work with, with NYPD on local issues on a daily basis. When it comes to some of these issues, you know, if you have somebody who's having, you know, a, a mental break, and they're carrying a knife, and, and, you know, they're in a home, it, it's going to be very difficult to, to kind of get anyone other than NYPD to answer that call on a very timely basis.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Sanji.
We're gonna have to move on. Thank you all. Next, let's hear from some District 11 community organizations. These questions are open to all candidates. We'll start with Jada Quinlan, a student at Lehman College.
The 11th District holds some of the wealthiest neighborhoods in the Bronx, which also carries some of the poorest neighborhoods in the cities. How will you prioritize the interests of these constituents if you are elected?
Equity. I think I said it before, equitable distribution of resources. We need to make sure our communities are resilient, and that's both in the hardware and the software of communities, so the built environment and the communal institutions. And we need to make sure that everybody carries the hard stuff and the easy stuff. So everybody has access to green space. Some of our neighborhoods border that cortland, and some of them don't have enough trees and green space to support healthy living. And we need to use those metrics in the council before decisions are made and not track it on the backend.
Thank you, Eric.
I, I think in some instances, in some ways, you can look at what we've done. I chose a job at John F. Kennedy Campus, working for and with the students who are really struggling the most, students with special needs and students of color. We can look up, I've, I've done work organizing to demand accessibility for people with disabilities in Norwood and Bedford Park on the four train.
Thank you, Eric. Carlton?
Okay, listen, folks, when you said, and I know Jessica said equitable, no. I, listen, when I become councilman, if I get this, I have to look. We have to share. There are some districts, like the question says, some districts that are very rich and some districts that are very poor, all right? So I'm gonna distribute the, 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 not equally, all right? I'm gonna look and see who needs a little bit more as opposed to who has a lot. We have to share. We're in this all together, all right? It makes no sense. Some of us think that some areas have been getting the, the more shared, the better share for a long time. That has to stop, and I will look at it and I will do it.
Dan?
Can I just correct the definition?
Yeah, we could, we could do a little bit extra time on this one where, you know, because this is an important question. Let's let Jessica just kind of clarify, then we'll go to Dan Paternak.
Carlton, I didn't say equal. Equal means every kid gets, you know, this much. I said equitable, which means if this kid is starting down here, they get that much. And if that kid is starting up here, they get less. So it's, it's about.
Okay.
Who are and, and getting them so that they can all have the equal opportunity to thrive.
Thank you, Jessica. Dan, Dan Paternak?
Yeah, so, you know, this is something where experience matters here. You have to understand your district, know your district, know the agencies and how they fund and how they operate. Constituent services is going to be key in getting resources to the most neediest and the poorest folks in our district. And it's gonna, it's gonna be routing money through the agencies to the appropriate networks. In some places, that's going to be nonprofits who are serving specific communities and providing specific services. And I know our areas, you know, there's two of us who are east of Broadway and, and understand, you know, some of the neediest areas are district. And again, my experience will take me right away from day one to be able to understand those areas and the neediest in our district.
All right, let's give Mino just a, a quick moment to respond here as well.
So I'm an immigrant from Dominican Republic. The majority of this district, 70% of this district is people of color. Almost 50% of us are Latino. And I say this because when we think about the power, I mean, it's not surprising that the question, right? This, this district has seven neighborhoods, and so often the conversation is held on a couple of them. So we need to be very clear that it is time, it is time to be shifting the focus, bringing our whole community together, yes, but as council member, I'm going to be centering those who have been erased, those who have been unheard. When we're talking about schools, students are going to be centered in those conversations with me. When we're talking about housing, tenants are going to be centered around that conversation. Elders are going to be centered around conversations where we're talking about equity and dignity and what are the needs for our elder community that is also a vibrant one.
Thank you, Mino. Sanji?
We're turning back to Mino Laura for this question, actually. Mino, we have a push for more affordable housing in New York City, but we also have a counter push trying to limit higher-density growth to help create the inventory needed to lower rents. Where do we find the balance and how can we find ways to limit the new high-density construction while still finding a way to create more affordable housing? You have two minutes.
Yeah, so there are 3,500 people living in the homeless shelter in District 11. And yes, we need to figure out a way to make sure that every single New Yorker is housed. And if now in the pandemic is not the time we prioritize, I don't know when it will be. So how do we do it? First, and I had mentioned this before, the current programs we have in place to incentivize building affordable housing are not enough, right? We're talking about 15 to 20% of new development. So we have to make it much more density so that we can meet the demand of affordable housing. So we need to shift the equation. We need to use the local median income. So often, we're using the area median income, which includes Westchester, which includes broader than who is District 11, than who are the community that need it. So that's the first thing that we would do. And then we need to expand. Mandatory inclusionary housing is a great idea in theory, but in practice... Mandatory inclusionary housing is a great idea in theory, but in practice, it's still making eighty percent of the apartments market rate, which gentrifies and exacerbates the issue of people getting displaced. We have seen the spot rezonings. We have seen, and that just brings inequity to the forefront. So we need to expand how we do affordability, so we don't have to be building hundreds and thousands of units. We need to be very specific on the units that we need, those for formally coming out of the homeless shelter, those that are coming out of being students, new families, from very low income to middle income. Those are the affordable housing that we need, and we can make it happen.
Thank you, Mina. Anyone else?
Go ahead, Carlton.
Yes. Well, you know what? What is really affordable? All right, I would like to move towards low income. All right, because I believe when we look at people's salaries, right? Then we can get a better understanding of what they can pay for rent. All right, because people that are working right now, no one should be paying fifty to sixty percent of their salary for rent. Because when they're doing that, how can they put food on the table? How could they put clothes on their kids' backs? All right? We need, and when these housing units go up, right, the perks that are given, no more eighty, twenty. It's gotta be fifty-fifty. All right, everything can't be a profit now, all right? And like I said, the AMI is way out of luck, way out of whack. You know, it's, how are you gonna take someone that lives in a poor part of the Bronx and match them up with someone in Westchester? All right, the AMI should be thrown out. Like I said, I don't want affordable because we don't know what affordable. Let's go with low-income house.
Thank you, Carlton. Dan?
Yeah, first, there's ten neighborhoods in our district. From somebody who's been here my entire life, there's ten. Beyond that, there's, you know, I think the question was dealing with higher density growth. And we have some neighbors, you know, who love the air and space around them, and they really don't want things overbuilt. I know Bedford Park has been hit particularly hard, especially in the last ten years with overdevelopment on some of their smaller streets. So the first thing you need to do as a council member is to walk in there, take a look at the current zoning in each particular neighborhood in our district, and see what makes sense and what doesn't. In addition, what you have to look at is the particular services that each of those communities have, particularly fire, police, it's school, et cetera, and match that up with the needs. And then take a look at as to what communities can be altered. When it comes to communities that do have a lot of air and space, you can look for using space within existing envelope, like basement apartments.
Yeah, thank you, Dan.
Look to design and use architects' designs.
I just wanted to give Jessica just one quick moment here to kind of jump in on this.
Yeah, I'm just thrilled to be endorsed in this race by Open New York and Affordable Housing Group. And I want to stress that sometimes there are opportunities to increase density without building, like legalizing pathways for accessory dwelling units, which will also help the tenants currently sneaking some of those places into those units. And that we have to think about increasing density, even if we might not want to, because that is the trend in this planet, is people moving into the cities, and we have to be.
Thank you, Jessica. And actually, our next question is for you. You live within a portion of the city known as the Special Natural Area District, a conservation program designed to protect natural features of the city, like trees and slopes. City planners believe the program, which was first designed in the nineteen seventies, is in serious need of update, and even tried to overhaul it unsuccessfully a couple of years ago. Does SNAD need updating, and are existing laws fair to homeowners and developers? You have two minutes.
I spent many years on the Board of Riverdale Nature Preservancy, working on updating SNAD. A couple of the issues with SNAD are, one is, does not, the laws of SNAD or the regulations of SNAD do not jive with the way ecosystems work. If it's a natural area district, we're making these rules to preserve ecosystems, except when you turn trees into digits and move them around, it doesn't come to that effect. SNAD did not have enough teeth, so when trees are cut down and buildings built, and nobody knows why, there was no recourse. I was very much in favor of moving forward with the changes to SNAD. I think it does need to get tweaked, to take into account the realities on the ground. I think that it was given in the new changes to SNAD, they were giving too much sort of as-of-right decisions to the homeowners and not enough, I guess, communication with the community board. We were so close, and then bureaucracy got in the way. It's actually much updated, much needed to be updated. And thinking about where else can we preserve sort of this green belt, especially up and down the Hudson River? I volunteered to take children into the woods in Riverdale Park, and we've seen eagles and owls and snakes because we are in this natural area, and it's such a resource, and we can't let it wear away because of overdevelopment.
Thank you, Jessica. Eric?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, I agree. The updating of SNAD cannot be too friendly for developers and people who just want to build, 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 build. And that is the trend that's going on in the city. And we need to ensure that any changes to local zoning have the voice of our community and the people within the community. So whether you're talking about SNAD or whether you're talking about building new buildings that don't fit in with the neighborhood and don't address needs, as Dan was saying earlier, like schools, fire, but also parking, that's when it becomes problematic. And we need the voice of our community, and we need a strong advocate in City Hall to make sure that any changes to any zoning, whether it's SNAD or otherwise, have the community in mind.
Thank you, Eric. Dan?
Hi, you know, it's an interesting issue. You know, I've been shared, or I'm sorry, I've been on the community board for twelve years. I was the chair of the board for three years, and I've, in my fourth year of being the vice chair of the Land Use Committee on Bronx Community Board Eight, and we've seen this issue. We had folks on the community board working on the SNAD update with city planning for the last few years. And I can tell you, you know, we weren't very close. I think there are some serious issues when it comes to SNAD that we have to work on. First and foremost is the enforcement. Right now, if somebody tears down a tree in the SNAD district, they get a thousand dollar fine, and that's it. And that's one of the big things at the community board level that we really care about, is the enforcement and the fines and the penalty schedule. Beyond that, it's creating a system that works, that is for homeowners.
Anybody else wanted to jump in on this?
We're gonna move on.
Sanji, go ahead.
Sure. This one is for Eric Dinowitz. You've spent many years as an educator in the city's public school system, a system that, at least from an administrative perspective, has changed a lot over the years. Where is the city falling short in addressing public schools? And what is your position on creating more localized boards, like what once existed, to help manage these schools?
Thank you. Yeah, so for over thirteen years, I've been a special education teacher in public schools. I'm very proud to have been endorsed by the United Federation of Teachers, both in my work as a teacher and as a union activist. I think if there is one thing that we need to change, it's the way high-stakes testing is applied to every single child. And what it does is it incentivizes our school to focus on the very wrong things. And I think a lot of people are now realizing that since the pandemic, we need to invest in social, emotional education and mental health education. How are we working with one another? We have to invest in environmental education. How are our children going to contribute to their communities, to our communities? And I think if we take the pressure off of those high-stakes standardized tests, we can have more funding and more time to invest in those programs. Because right now, if a school, a child, and a teacher are only based on a single test score, there is no incentive for any of them to invest time and energy in what truly matters to a child.
Thank you so much, Eric. Mina, go ahead.
Yeah, I agree with Eric when it comes to high-stakes testing. And I think, you know, in addition to being an executive director, I've been an educator as well for many years, and I trust teachers. Teachers know how to differentiate the learning for their students. But what happens when you have thirty-five kids in a classroom? You can't. I've been there. I've been teaching, I've taught in the Bronx for many years, classes of thirty-five kids. I want to differentiate the learning, and I can't. So rather than investing, yes, taking away testing that put pressure on children and staff and teachers and principals as well, we need to be investing, rather than in one classroom in a school that gets extra resources, downsizing classrooms. That's what I'm going to be doing. Focus on downsizing classrooms and making sure that we're investing in ongoing assessments, holistic assessments, self-assessment, peer assessments, so that we can really be tracking growth and not how they're coming in.
Thank you, Mina. Carlton?
Yes, first of all, I want to commend Eric, all right, for the work that he does, not only just a teacher, but a special education teacher, you know, so I want to commend him on that. And I do agree with him, teaching to the test. No, when I came up, when I came up, right, we had wood classes, we had drama, we had music. I notice now, almost like the last twenty-five years, things like that was taken out the class. Listen, everyone is not going to be able, right, to go to Yale. All right, so I like more well-rounded students, all right? Teaching to the test was a bad idea. Like you said, it put pressures on the teachers, the students, right? What about the parents? You know, so I would like to take that away. And if I get the position, I'm gonna look into it. One other thing I want to know is this.
Yeah, thank you, Carlton. We have to move on. Dan?
Or, you know, I teach mock trial to seventh graders over at PS ninety-five, where I went to grammar school. And when I went to grammar school there and one forty-three afterwards, learning was much different. We had two tests per year. We had a large reading one and a large math one, and there really wasn't anything tied to it. Right now, we've got to get off of this mode of teaching to the test and get teachers back to what they do best, which is skills-based learning, training the kids. Give them, I love how Carlton said rounding about the education. I remember music class. I remember doing that as a kid. You know, I think we need to get back to vocational schools for high schools. Give something different.
Thank you, Dan. Let's let Jessica jump in really quick on this.
I believe the question was in governance of the schools, and can we go to smaller, more local? I think that the, I think managing one point one million students from one place, if COVID has taught us anything, we need to manage smaller groups and delve into the art of what's possible. It's a lot easier to delve into the art of what's possible with not only smaller classrooms, but smaller governance of schools, you know, and groups. So that's how I would answer your original question.
Thank you so much, Jessica. Our next question goes to Dan Paternak. The Metropolitan Transportation Authority believes the best way to improve transit in the Bronx is by adding a number of bus lanes to existing streets. The MTA says this will allow buses to avoid traffic and keep them moving at a decent pace. But the cost is parking, something many businesses along those streets believe is vital. Are bus lanes the answer? How do we improve getting from one side of the Bronx to the other? And we need that answer in two minutes.
Oh, okay. So first, bus lanes are helpful in certain areas. However, they need to be carefully thought out. You know, we had one, which was basically for three blocks, which was pretty poorly thought out here in our community and really wouldn't have done very much, and it would have hurt stores. So whenever a bus lane is added, you know, we need careful planning on it, and we need conversation with the community as well. Now, as far as east-west in the Bronx, it's an extremely difficult thing. It always has been. You know, so the truth is, that's beyond bus lanes. And we need to start kind of thinking about other modes and being creative on infrastructure of what else we can do to tie east-west in the Bronx. Again, a lot of planning, and that's what I think really needs to go into that.
Well, but Dan, just to kind of follow up there really quick, I mean, how are we, I mean, how are we dealing with parking? Like, what, you know, I mean, because if you're throwing in lanes as such, you're gonna have to give up parking. What do you, what do you say to those businesses that lose that parking?
Correct. So, you know, the one, I'm sorry, they did one in Community Board Eight, which I know you're familiar with. And in that instance, it would have hurt the businesses way too much. So when that came to the community board, you know, I was actually opposed to this three-block, you know, bus lane that the MTA had proposed, or I should say the DOT with the MTA had proposed to put there. When it comes to parking, again, if you're going to take away from the businesses, you need to create something for those businesses to generate customers or to be available to the customers. So it's, again, it's a mix, it's a balance, and each particular project is different.
All right, thank you, Dan. Eric?
Yeah, this is a symptom of always, you know, a bigger problem, right? We have this planning from downtown Manhattan. They see maps and data, but our representative needs to see businesses and people. And I agree with Dan that it depends on the local neighborhood. Bus lanes are not the answer everywhere, and they're the answer somewhere. The question is, who's going to advocate for our community? When the MTA came here and wanted to cut our express bus service, I stood up and spoke out against those cuts. When I saw a need for accessibility in Norwood and Bedford Park, I stood up and brought together a coalition of people to collect over two thousand signatures to testify at that MTA meeting, to say we need accessibility here. And the MTA committed to installing elevators at that train station on Marshalleu and Jerome. So that is the question. Who's going to get the MTA, the city, to listen, to have our communities back?
Anybody else want to jump in on this? Carlton?
Yeah, well, just like Dan and Eric said, it's difficult. What I would do as a councilman is I would bring the MTA and the business owners together, you know, and we have to sit down and come up with something, because if it's desperately needed, you don't want to hurt the businesses, but at the same time, you do need the transportation. So how I would handle that would be bringing both of them together and coming up with, you know, with the resolution to it.
All right, thank you, Jessica.
Yeah, I was at that meeting about that Broadway bus lane. The council member wasn't, because it's actually technically outside of District Eleven. I was the only one there speaking up for that. I believe the number was five thousand people trying to get to work in school faster, safer, on the buses more efficiently. The bus lanes are something we can control in the city that we don't have to work through the state. I think we need more of them. You're right, they need to be smart. But the voices of the people of the whole Bronx were not represented, and the bus lanes are how they're going to get there. And it takes courageous folks like the DOT to do what they did on Fourteenth Street. And we need to use that connectivity so that people, especially in a COVID era, where we're not going north-south into the city, we need to be able to get, you know, across the Bronx as well.
So I'm gonna follow up there. I heard that traffic meeting that it was, and I can tell you, it was poorly planned. It would have hurt those businesses, and it would have done absolutely nothing, or I should say, very, very little, to speed up the commute on Broadway. It was poorly thought out from beginning to end, and there was no way that it should have been implemented. And the council member of that district, I know, was concerned about it, and I believe he spoke up and advocated against it as well.
All right, Jessica, you wanted to respond to that?
Yeah, only that's, I mean, that's what the numbers that DOT showed. I guess it's, you know, it's the kind of thing we need to test it and see, but I'm just saying.
DOT did not have numbers on that, Jessica. What it would actually do.
Let's not speak over each other, please. Let Jessica finish her thought. Did you want to finish that thought, Jessica?
Yeah, it was just, there was no one representing the voices of the people who actually took the buses at that meeting. It was three business owners. There were parking alternatives. How it actually gets implemented, you have to test it. You have to do a pilot, and you actually have to see real things and not make up hypotheticals. It's, again, it's yin and yang.
Yeah, thank you, Jessica. Mina, real briefly, Mina? Dan, 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 thank you, Mina?
I'm just really sure to say, the majority of New Yorkers don't have cars. Having a car is a privilege, and it is very difficult to get east to west. And that, again, is very, you know, thank you, Robert Moses, for that. There are, you know, it's very specific. There is an issue. So how do we fix it? We need to invest in public transportation. We need to make sure public transportation is accessible. It's efficient, it's, you know, it's green, it's electric, and it meets the needs of our community. And we also need to think about if we're doing bike lanes, accessibility with bikes, and making sure that it's affordable. A city-owned bike sharing is also needs to be accessible, affordable. So I think, you know, yes, parking is important. It's a pain, it's a pain, and it's difficult, and some people need it. But the majority of New Yorkers use public transit, and that needs to be the priority. The majority of the people need to be making the decisions.
Thank you, Mina. Go ahead, Sanji.
All righty, we're gonna move on. This next question is for Mr. Carlton Berkeley. For as long as most can remember, this council district has been Riverdale-heavy or simply represented by someone from Riverdale. Yet, the council district covers a good portion of the Bronx, well into the Wakefield and Norwood areas. What specific issues in the eastern portion of the district are getting missed, in your opinion?
Well, every part. I mean, you can go from unemployment to housing to education. Every part is suffering. However, listen, if I do become a councilman, I'm not going to take anything away from Riverdale and Woodlawn, all right? Because those seem to be the best neighborhoods in the district. However, all right, I would like to make them the model, right, areas for every other place, all right? But like I said before, you can go to Kingsbridge, you can go to Norwood, you could come to Wakefield. Every other place, right, has problems from homelessness to unemployment to everything else. However, Riverdale doesn't, Woodlawn somewhat. But like I said, what I do, and you're right, all of our representatives have come from Riverdale, every single one. It's time for change, but I don't want Woodlawn, and I don't want Riverdale to think that I'm the boogeyman. I will never hurt their areas, all right? What I will do is, like I said, make them the model areas. Being councilman, I'd like to go in there and see what works for them, and I would like to bring it to the other parts of the district.
Thank you, Carlton. Eric?
Yeah, I think it's a question of who's going to represent the entire district. You know, I grew up Kingsbridge Heights and then in Kingsbridge. And when it came time for my job as a special education teacher right out of college at twenty-one years old, I chose employment in Kingsbridge at the John F. Kennedy Campus and then at Walton, right? I even take my kids for the parks cleanups at Bissell Gardens in Wakefield every Sunday growing up in the amalgamated, my grandma's house on Hillman Avenue. And when it came time to, when I saw a need for accessibility on our subways, I saw it in Bedford Park and Norwood. And that's where I brought together the coalition of people to bring accessibility to that station. So if the question is about who will represent the entire district, you can look at the work we've done in different districts. And I've been working and have done the work and advocated for people all over the Northwest Bronx.
Thank you, Eric. Dan?
Sure. Yeah, I think we need a council member who's not from Riverdale. I'm from Kingsbridge. I grew up here. I live here. I work here. I understand the needs of all of the areas. I understand the needs of all of the areas. You know, when we're east of Broadway, you know, the needs are much different than those west of Broadway. So I think I understand that. I think I appreciate that, and having gone to public school here as well. I think as a council member, I'd be the best person to represent the ten neighborhoods within District eleven.
Thank you, Dan. Mina?
Yeah, ever since I came here and I came to New York, I've lived east of Broadway. That has been my whole life. I was displaced from Washington Heights. I used to live in Upper Manhattan and came to the Bronx, and I live in Spiting Dible. So I think in thinking about how do we represent, it's my life's work has been here, my community, a lot of my community has been here. And then also the experience of not being able to afford it anymore, and then building a home in a different one. And what are the opportunities? So bringing that duality, you know, as a, I'm a proud public school parent as well. My child goes to a Title I school. And I think I see the needs of our communities, of all of our communities, our working-class families, our immigrant families. And, and, you know, what is needed when it comes to education justice, when it comes to housing, when it comes to the services, as Carlton was saying. This is the worldview, the experience that I would bring in representing and making sure that every single voice and every single block by block, we are organizing our community so that they can identify, and they can not identify because they know it, but they can be heard and we can legislate accordingly.
Thank you, Mina. Jessica, did you want to chime in?
Yeah, I always refer to our district, I've always been quoting David Dinkins on this one. This district, like all of New York City, is a gorgeous mosaic. We were fed a line that we are a melting pot and thinking, you know, my grandmother came to this country and it was a melting pot. My father was an immigrant, we're a melting pot. This district particularly versus all the other districts in the city is the representative of the gorgeous mosaic that makes up our city. And I think it's about listening to, engaging with, understanding the problems with the unequitable distributions of resources that I've been working on, you know, for years and trying to create equity, the resilience and the sustainability in the city. And the approach is just, is just that gorgeous mosaic.
Thank you so much, Jessica. Our second community question comes from Sheila Maloney, the interim editor at the Norwood News.
Thank you, and hello to the candidates. A recent report by the City Controller found that just forty percent of employee-based businesses in the Bronx received PPP loans. Some of the business owners I spoke with last summer, who were now native English speakers, found the application process overly complex, time-consuming, and many were unsure of their eligibility. Given the high concentration of immigrant-owned businesses in the borough, as a city council member, what would you do to help small businesses navigate the application process and ensure they get help when it's available? Thank you.
First, I'll say I'm proud to be endorsed by the New York Immigration Coalition because of my commitment and advocacy for immigrant New Yorkers. Yes, so much of our small businesses have been hurt, and they need relief now. Right now, down the street, Booney, which is an immigrant-owned, women-owned business, is shutting down. Capoeira, Bada Capoeira, another mommy friend, immigrant woman también is closing. So what do we need? Language access is key. Investing in smaller organization, community-based organization, faith-based organizations that are doing this work and supporting one another. We have seen the mutual aid efforts that have been built and how our communities have risen up. Why is government not investing in those, making sure that we are supporting bids? We are supporting collectives that are investing in energy democracy? But let's talk about economic democracy as well, right here in the Bronx. Language access, making it available, and expanding the grants for local businesses.
Thank you, Mina. Eric?
So I just want to share a little about who I am and who I'll be as a council member. About eight years ago, I had been teaching for a few years. And year after year, I had immigrant families, students of families who only spoke Spanish. And I, there was a barrier there. And so I made the choice to spend time learning Spanish. I traveled to, in order to take classes and study Spanish. And I learned enough Spanish to have those personal communications, those personal conversations with those family members of my students. That's the work that I did. That's the type of person I am. And that's the type of commitment I will bring to this job. I think there are programs, the PPP loans were mentioned. I think the city has a role to play, a multilingual role, obviously, in making sure our small businesses have equity and access to those loans and to all of the other services that are required. And I would just add that in every single one of my proposals, which you could find at ericdenowitz.com, I'm very specific in saying that for our small businesses, for our communities, everything needs to have a multilingual approach because everyone needs access to the services our city provides.
Thank you, Eric. We got to move on. And so we are talking to Eric Denowitz, and we actually just brought up Booney Coffee. So unless something happened last minute to save it, a growing mom-and-pop business called Booney Coffee is closing its Riverdale location. COVID nineteen played a role, but the owners of the coffee shop said the landlord didn't help much either way. Many of these small businesses sign personal guarantees on their commercial leases, meaning if something happens to their business, they could be personally liable. Because of the pandemic, such guarantees were suspended by the city council, but many believe these guarantees should be permanently abolished. What is your position on the Small Business Jobs Survival Act that suspended these guarantees? And how would you propose better protecting small businesses from within the city?
Is that for me?
Yes, Eric, that's for you.
All right, okay. So there are a number of solutions. So, so yes, yes, you know, what you mentioned. There are, there are a few things. One is a vacancy tax. And if you're, you know, a person living in the Northwest Bronx, you know exactly what a vacant storefront looks like. And it's especially detrimental if you are an older adult who is perhaps, or a person with a disability who is perhaps less mobile. Seeing those empty storefronts is not the character of our neighborhood we want, and not being able to go out and get what you need is a deep problem. I believe in a vacancy tax, which means a landlord who will be incentivized to negotiate that lease with their tenants, or else they will pay, you know, a tax, exactly what it sounds like. I do believe in most of the aspects of the Small Business Survival Act. I think there are aspects of it that need to be addressed, in particular, the fact that it does, will a large, big-box retailer like Target benefit from it? Will a multinational chain like McDonald's benefit from something that should be going to our small businesses, our mom-and-pop shops? There are a number of proposals I agree with, which is treating our small businesses, which need commercial rent regulation, with some of the protections that our tenants have. And of course, we need to expand the protections for tenants, but treating our small businesses, you know, with dignity. And so they can stay in our neighborhood with those rent regulations and with those vacancy taxes.
Thank you, Eric. Anybody want to jump in? Dan?
Sure, yeah. You know, I want to expand grants, discounts, tax credits, and subsidies to small business because they need them. Quite frankly, right now with COVID and the amount of business many of these small businesses have lost, I want, you know, essentially to get DEP water rate discounts. I think that's extremely important. I'd like to expand the free outdoor space for businesses. Normally, they have to pay for a license to operate. I want to expand that through 2024. In addition, what I want to do is create grants for a lot of the small businesses to create outdoor dining spaces. We don't know how long the pandemic is going to go, but you know, something is interesting, something interesting is happening. We have these new creative outdoor spaces throughout our community. I want to expand that and get money to the small businesses while making it easier. In terms of leasing, I think one of the most important aspects, and as an attorney, I know this, it comes down to the lease in the beginning. And whether it's dealing with a personal guarantee and negotiating a good guy guarantee within there or negotiating preferable terms for renewal leases, what we really need is to get small businesses hooked up with free attorneys to help these small businesses.
Thank you, Dan. Anybody else, Mina?
Yeah, the Commercial Lease Assistance Program, similar to what Dan is saying, should be expanded, right? It supports tenants so that they can negotiate with the landlords, but that's not enough. The Small Business Jobs Survival Act is a great step, and we need to pass it. We also, there's a bill right now that puts rent guidelines. Right now, there is rent stabilization for housing. We need to put that for commercial rent stabilization. Because small businesses, as you said, Michael, are mostly, especially here, but across the city, immigrants and families own our small businesses. So yes, we put the protection so that they are put at the front. We also need to lift the cap on street vendors. These are entrepreneurs, mostly immigrant business owners. And that's how we're building the, that's how we're building our economy. So when we talk about business, let's not let our vendors.
Thank you, Mina. Jessica?
Yeah, vendors, I think, is moving through right now. It'll be taken care of hopefully before we get there. Commercial rent reform, if we're, if we are helping out the small businesses, we also have to help the small landlords because a lot of these smaller businesses are not owned by giant commercial real estate holders, but those people are also locals, so we have to help them with real estate tax so that they can maintain the billings that the small businesses are in and make sure the economy flows that way.
Thank you, Jessica. Let's let Eric have a say in this. Go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, I just wanted to add to what was mentioned, what I mentioned before about the vacancy tax and commercial rent regulation is, there were mentioned that programs, lots of programs for loans and for grants, which are all very important. But if you're a small business owner, you got, it's you, maybe a few employees, you need help navigating those programs. And so in addition to whatever, whatever grants and programs are available, they need real help in navigating the, you know, the system in order to have access to that.
Excellent. Thank you so much, Eric. Sanji?
All righty, our next question, we're moving on, is actually for Carlton Berkeley. Carlton, you have a history of running for the city council in the past, but in different parts of the city, that's not this one. Since you have to live within that council district, that suggests you've bounced around the city a bit. Some might say that puts you at a disadvantage of addressing the needs of this district in particular. But can you share how instead it would actually help you be a better representative?
Sure. All right. First of all, I was born and raised in Harlem. So when I ran in Harlem, I was living in Harlem. I started living in the Bronx at the age sixteen because my mom lost an apartment to gentrification. Been in the Bronx ever since. When my mom moved to the part of the Bronx, because one of the newspapers had it wrong, I moved close to Yankee Stadium. And then from there, I moved to, in nineteen ninety-seven, I've been living here at my house in Wakefield. So I don't know how they got it wrong, but when I ran, my first two times that I ran, I ran in Harlem, Harlem. And then when I ran, and the first time in the Bronx was, was around that time in ten years where you can, you didn't have to actually live in the neighborhood, but when I ran in the sixteenth, that was because of my church was there, my pastor and people as being a deacon wanted, wanted me to run there because they know what type of person I am and an honest person. However, I don't.
I want to interject and ask you the question, how it would actually help you be a better representative?
Well, it could help me be a better representative because I just know what's going on in the city. I believe I'm the old, I am the oldest one here. All right, that's running at the age of fifty-eight. That's what I think, you know? So I've been around a longer time, and I know what's been going on throughout the city for a very long time. So that's how I think it would help me.
Thank you, Carlton. Anyone else want to chime in to this one? All righty, we will move on. Oh, Eric?
I was going to say, you know, much respect to the guy who, you know, runs, wants to contribute to the community. And you've been around the longest. I've been around the least amount of time. But I think, I think being thirty-five years old, like, you know, still do a great job representing the neighborhood. You know, I was, you know, I was born and raised in the Northwest Bronx, but I also worked here for twelve years in our public school. I served on the community board as the chair of the Aging Committee. You know, fought for accessibility, fought against cuts to our bus service. And so it's not just about where you live, right? Because all of us have different histories. All of us have different pasts. But it's about what you do in the community. And the work that I've done, my career as an educator, as a community activist, has been rooted here in the Northwest Bronx.
Okay, well, and I commend you for that, Eric. I really do. And let me tell you something.
And no disrespect, you know, no.
No, no. And I, and I understand, and that's why I said I commend you for what you do also. But I've been a community activist for almost forty years. And what I mean by being a community activist, just because I live in one area. And if you look at my history, I fought police brutality, whether it happened in Brooklyn, Staten Island, or any other place. So I moved, I moved around, all right? And that's what I do today. I go wherever racism shows this ugly face. But I do commend you, right, for doing what you do. And like I said, I've never had a problem with your father. I think he's a good man, all right? But I, when, you know, I look at a lot of things that you have done, right? And you can't say that your father hasn't helped you along. I mean, people, people really look, I think your father sort of paved the way for you, all right? I'm not saying that you can't do it on your own, but I'm just saying, the name Denowitz and your father goes together with you, Eric. That's all I'm saying.
Eric, we'll give you the opportunity to respond.
And like, you know, and again, you know, appreciate the work you've put in to the city, to the community. I think it's like a disagreement about, you know, the name. I respect the voters, and I think the voters are smart. And I think the voters watching tonight are going to judge us based on our commitment to our community, the work we've done, and our vision moving forward, not on a name.
Thank you so much, Eric. We're going to move on to the next question, which is for Dan Paternak. Andrew Cohen, as you know, left the seat a year early to become a Bronx judge. That's forced the city to put together this special election just three months before a primary that will ultimately cost taxpayers one million dollars. You yourself have run for another office in the past, once seeking a state senate seat, now held by Gustavo Rivera. If you were to win this seat, would you be willing right now to pledge that you'll serve out a full term each time you're elected, should your fellow candidates make the same pledge?
Yeah, so you're right, I did run about ten years ago, and I actually withdrew that bid, you know, for the good of the Democratic Party. You know, so that way Gustavo had a one-on-one shot against a guy named Pedro Espada. This, Andy, Andy Cohen and I went on to the community board together, you know, twelve years ago. He went on to become a council member. What I can tell you is this, if elected to be the city council member, I will serve the full term of the council. I will, whatever the term is, I am going to serve it. In the special till the end of the year, and then I'm going to run again in the Democratic primary in June and hopefully serve that term out in the next two years.
Do you believe everybody else should make that pledge, though, as well?
I hope so. I think so. You know, I would hope that every other candidate here states that they will serve out the full term.
Okay, Jessica, you want to jump in?
Yeah, this goes back to the Bronx machine. Our Bronx Democratic Party knows in August, when they nominate a guy to be a judge, that that nomination could just as well have happened, I think that you guys thought, two years earlier or twelve months later. In the middle of a pandemic, for our Bronx Democratic Party to decide that we should be unrepresented for this period of time is intentional. It's intentional. It's not Kamala Harris going to be the vice president. Andy is going to be a fantastic judge, and he could have been just as a fantastic judge twelve months later so that we could have not been unrepresented during a pandemic, and the decision was made while we were in the pandemic. So this, this all ties into a narrative that we are all trying to break here.
Okay, Eric, did you want to say, join in on this?
Yeah, it was just mentioned, the Bronx Democratic Party, it is an endorsement that all of us here sought out, went through two processes, through two interview processes with a panel. And I'm very proud to have been endorsed by the Bronx Democrats.
Okay, anybody else want to jump in on this? Because, you know, but Eric, I mean, you know, the one thing that I just wanted to, you know, to bring up, since, you know, this is talking about machine politics, is that we also had the Ben Franklin Club, which had some very strange things going on that the Riverdale Press had reported on. I mean, what do you think about what happened there? I mean, in terms of, you know, everybody backed out of that endorsement except for you, and you're the one that got it, but everybody thought you were getting it anyway. Your father has contributed a lot of money to that club over the years. I mean, do you think that there's not a machine at play here?
So what's special about the Ben Franklin Club, and I've been a member of that club since I was eighteen. Jessica and Dan are both members of that club. What's special about the club, which is unique from other political organizations in the Northwest Bronx, is that the endorsements, the decisions are actually made by the membership. I'm very proud to have received the Ben Franklin Club's endorsement by an overwhelming majority. And I think it's because they recognize the work that I've done as a district leader, making it easier to vote or advocating to make it easier to vote by absentee ballot, advocating to make it easier to vote with early voting, advocating for campaign finance reform that puts us all financially on an even playing field. And the fact that you're candidates.
Thank you, Eric. I don't know if you're really answering, thank you, Eric, I don't know if you're really answering the question, but go ahead. Sanji, moving on to you.
Before we move on, I just would like to ask, yes or no, would each of the other candidates pledge to serve their full term each time you're elected? Yes or no? We'll start with Jessica.
Yeah, that's, that's why we're doing this. That's why we're doing it.
Mina?
Yes, absolutely.
So, Eric? Yeah, I think that I will, but let's be honest here.
Well, no, yes or no, Eric? Yes or no? Let's not, it's not, yes or no, Eric?
No one's attacking Richie Tolbert for running for Congress.
Yes or no, Eric?
Nobody's attacking Kamala Harris.
Vice President. Eric, thank you. Carlton?
Yes, I would, absolutely.
All right, thank you. Go ahead, Sanji.
We're going to have to move on. Thank you. Our final community question comes from Stephanie Coggins from Facebook's Council District Eleven Voters Forum. Let's take a look.
Member difference is a concept where the city council will support or reject legislation affecting a specific district in tune with the wishes of or reject legislation affecting a specific district in tune with the wishes of its council member and his constituents. Here in District Eleven, we've seen member deference used in different ways, such as when our council member was not transparent as to his intentions on a major decision, or when a decision was made in spite of constituent sentiments. What are the positive and negative uses of member deference?
Yeah, thank you, thank you. No, I was on the Community Board Eight's land use committee when the Hebrew home application came before the board. They wanted to build something that was outside the zoning regulations. Now, what happened in that instance was the Hebrew home essentially negotiated with local community members and local community groups because they knew that at the end of the day, they were going to be able to go to the city council member who was Andy Cohen. They were going to say, here's, here's our agreement. Andy Cohen was then going to be able to go to the council and vote, and the rest of the city council was going to follow that local council member's lead. And that is vital. That is vital in making sure that our community members have a voice in land use decisions and big developments that are going to come up in our community. Because the alternative, the alternative to that is to say, if you have a big developer, what can they do with their deep pockets? They can go ahead and lobby every single other member of the city council to vote for the zoning changes they want and leave our community members voiceless.
Thank you.
I don't think our community members' voices heard.
Thank you, Dan.
Sure, yeah. So first with the Hebrew home, it was within the land use regulations. They were seeking a special permit. And that special permit required a city council approval. That's what was occurring there to go through the ULR process. With regards to member deference and getting to Stephanie's question, the positive aspect of member deference is that the council member of the district is actually on the line and he's accountable. He can't necessarily go against, essentially tell the community he's for one thing and then go to the buddies on the city council and have them like approve it separately. So there's accountability there. The negative, the problem that will occur is when a council member goes against, you know, the strong desires or wishes of the community and, you know, particularly does not explain themselves to the community. And I think that's what really gets to the root of it.
Okay, thank you, Dan. Thank you, Dan. Jessica?
Yeah, everything is connected. In this city, everything is connected. How we get places, where we live, where we work are all connected. Large developments in one part of the city drastically affect everybody in the whole city. I will not give away, if I'm going to be council member, I'm not going to tell you in advance whether I'm going to defer or not. I think that that is a, you know, it is one way to amplify the voices in the community. And yes, I worked very hard on that Hebrew home stuff again through the Riverdale Nature Preservancy. And there are different voices in the community, but we are, we are all connected. And if the connectivity doesn't make sense for the city, then all of the voices in the city matter in those decisions.
Okay, thank you. Sanji, we're going to move on to the next question.
Sure. This next question is a little similar to one we've asked earlier, but it's an opportunity to explore the topic a little further. There are plenty, there's plenty of diversity in the eleventh council district, not just ethnically and culturally, but in terms of wealth as well. Living on the hill overlooking the Hudson River is a far different experience than living just about anywhere else in the borough, except it still costs a lot for rent and food. That adversity can be hard to manage. And many complain that more attention is paid to the western side of the district where all the money is than anywhere else. How would you find common ground to help represent these very different communities? Mino, we'd like to ask you that first.
So there's, one of the things that I bring to this position and to my campaign and I would do as council member is my experience in bringing communities together. And as an artist as well, which is one of the strong identities that I hold and experience, I have done that. I have worked with government, with young people, with elders and senior centers. So being able to be creative about how we engage community members in them making the decision is what I've done and what I know how to do. Right now, we need creativity. We need deep listening from our elected officials and we need innovation. And that's something that I have experience with and I would do. One, one idea, when we talk about participatory budgeting, I think that should be expanded so that community members should say where the funding should go, and not just for capital projects, but really funding for services, funding for contracts. Additionally, legislative, that should be participatory. There are models that exist. There's something called legislative theater where everyday New Yorkers and members are able to really pan out and explore together. What are the options? This exists in other countries. It has happened in New York City and Queens. And I plan to bring that to the Bronx as well. When we're putting in legislation, progressive, anti racist legislation, it's not going to be mine. It's going to be District Eleven's, engaging all of the different voices from every single neighborhood.
Thank you, Mino. Anyone else want to chime in? All right, Dan?
Yeah, I mean, you have to understand the neighborhoods and their needs that don't have the wealth that up the hill Riverdale does. And, you know, quite frankly, I mean, two of the candidates live in Doran Building. The other lives in a gated community with private security. I live in a walk up apartment building, you know, in the eastern side of this district. It's different needs. And I think candidates have to understand that going into this race and as a council member. And I think when you're talking about, you know, the different needs of the district, you know, down here, many folks talk about where their kids are going to go to middle school. And, you know, it's a much different conversation than folks in Riverdale who have RKA. And when I went to grammar school, quite frankly, when I came out of PS ninety five, if you weren't zoned for one forty one and most of us weren't, people were giving fake addresses. And that's how they got into a better school in Riverdale. You know, it needs to change. And you have to understand the needs of the parents and everything else that are on the other side of the district. And I think the council member needs to do that.
Thank you, Dan. Jessica, did you want to answer?
Just to be totally clear, there are no gates around here. You're welcome to join the all of the Bronx walking down the street. But thank you for that, Dan. It is the responsibility of the council member to engage with all of the, all of the communities in the district. And I think one of the challenges is that the council members have not, I don't know, leveraged technology. I think like Mino said, leveraged innovation, different languages, different people, different constituents. We need to build coalition among the different people and collect voices. And we have tools now that are cheap and inexpensive to translate to different languages and to communicate for people. And we're, we crowdsource ideas all the time in our pockets. And we should use, leverage these technologies for our, for our constituent services and for our legislative process.
You, Jessica. Eric?
I'm glad Dan, I'm glad Dan thinks I'm wealthy. I'd be the first wealthy public school teacher that I've ever known. But you know, when I'm in the classroom in schools like Kennedy and Walton, it does not matter who comes through my door, who comes into my classroom, what they look like, where they're from. It doesn't matter. I fight for each one of them and try to provide the education, the best education I can for every single one of them and for their families. And that is the same commitment that I will bring as a member of the city council for District Eleven. No matter where you live, no matter who you are, I am representing you and your voice in the city council.
Thank you, Eric.
All you.
Thank you, Eric. So Jessica, this, you know, our last question here in these rounds here is going to you. And this could have went to anybody, but you kind of got the short straw on this one. We've asked some pretty long questions, but believe it or not, this is a pretty short one. And don't worry, I will have a quick follow up. It's a quick, has a quick follow up. But, you know, but simply, when was the last time you rode a city bus?
When was the last time? I don't know, I went up to Skyview the other day. I take it to the shopping center.
Okay, so in the next minute or so. So in the next minute, so like, how important is it then? And that's the reason why I ask. How important is it for this district's city council representative to be on the ground to experience life the way many of their constituents experience it? And do you yourself feel grounded?
Oh, I feel, I, by the way, everybody, I live where I live so that I can walk to the one train. Okay, I live where I live. You've seen, you've seen my card, right? We, it is really important to be grounded. I am grounded. My kids take the city, the, the, sorry, the bus, the city bus, the BX twenty, I take the subway all the time. I, it is important. By the way, it's also important that we create communities where more people can access it. I mean, one of the challenges that, you know, Dan was talking about the parking, one of the challenges with parking of buses is that there's a spine and people on the west side of the Bronx over here are more than half a mile away from the bus stops and the subway stops. And it's hard for them to use it. We need more of it. We need it more frequent. We need it, we need interconnectivity. We need microtransit. We need people to get there so they're not going to rely on their cars. It's totally important and it's totally, you know, that's it. That's, that's the heart of it. I mean, yes, I've really been sitting at my table for most of the last nine months, but I'm using, I'm sure like all of you, but I'm on the subway and I'm on the, you know, are on the buses and that's, that's what we need to do.
What about other candidates? Anybody else, Mino, do you feel grounded? Do you feel, you know, you're on the ground with your constituents, potential constituents?
Yes, thank you. I, I do. You know, and I'll, and I'll share a little bit about that, about what that means first. And, you know, and it's great, Eric, that you learned Spanish and that speaks to your, I didn't have to, but I learned English, which is important, right? It's my native language. And I think being able to speak to the majority of our community in our native tongue says something about being grounded, being able to connect to the individual human beings that make our city what it is. Yes, I, I mean, I've been on quarantine, so I haven't been taking the bus. But we walk to Marble Hill Housing for preschool. We take the bus to take the BX seven to take our kid to school every day. Or, you know, on the two days a week when she's in school. And then also, you know, my whole twenties, I was uninsured. I just became insured six years ago. I pay less here. I had the opportunity to move here and I pay less here than I did in rent because there were no regulations. So I know what the fight is to fight for your own healthcare, to use public hospitals so that you can get your needs. I know what it is to be, to be in that fear of not knowing if something happens, what you'll do, of coming to this country and just building everything up, of trying to belong. So yes, I am.
Dan, do you feel grounded?
Absolutely. You know, I live in a maze courtyard called the Shulamalekam Houses. We have fifteen buildings, two hundred and thirty six families. You know, many of us know each other. You know, I grew up here, so I know most of the people in the neighborhood. I walk outside. I say hello to people every day. Most people know that if they have an issue in the community, they can come to me. If they have a legal issue, I'll certainly give them information. You know, during the pandemic, one of the greatest things that I could do giving back was essentially provide legal information and free services for folks who had questions about housing laws and questions about estate laws. And those are two very key things going on throughout the pandemic. Throughout the day, I walk around the neighborhood all the time. I run. I love running, so you'll see me running around Van Cortlandt Park, the reservoir, all over the place. I tend to do a tour around, you know, the community every now and again. We'll do like a nine mile run and just.
Thank you, Dan. Eric, do you feel grounded?
Yes, you mentioned the buses, but you know, like Dan, we use other modes of transportation. He uses his feet. I use my bicycle and I walk places, you know? You know, I grew up in Mitchell Lama Housing over on Tibbett Avenue in Kingsbridge. You know, but I think, you know, one of the reasons I'm in this is my students, the stories of my students. And every day I'm hearing another one about, you know, a homeless student who, beyond all the other struggles they go through, didn't have a device, couldn't engage in education in the same way that their peers could. You know, food insecurity. Students came into my classroom over the years hungry and, you know, economic insecurity, right? These are the stories I see and saw every day as a teacher. And I've been teaching through the pandemic and those stories keep coming up, keep coming up. You know, during the pandemic, you know, after work one day, I go to Bainbridge Avenue to help give out meals to lines of people down the block. I go to Marshalama.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Eric. Carlton, do you feel grounded?
Yeah, yes, I do. Other than, other than using my car, because I'm a deacon in my church, other than using my, my car to deliver pantry, you know, to the much needed senior citizens in our church, that's the only time I use my car. Other than that, in my neighborhood here, people know how to find me. And I made my home because I'm a retired New York City detective. My wife is a retired New York City correction officer. I made my home just as well as my small business, a safe haven. Because when that young man was hacked to death in the Bronx, I want people to know that, you know, if they come past my house, no matter what time it is, they can knock on my door. If a woman is walking home at night and she believes she's being followed, yeah, knock on my door. My wife and I, you are aunt, right? And we were walking them into the house just as well as kids. And I do this with my small business.
Thank you, Carlton. Appreciate that. And so, and now we are going to give each candidate a chance to share some closing thoughts. Once again, we are going in a random order. And Carlton, you're first up. One minute, please.
Okay. Well, what I want people to know is that I am a retired New York City detective. One agency that will not endorse me is the Police Department, and that's only because, right, that I, that I don't go for what they do. I've always fought against them, but I just want to say that ninety percent of the officers out there are good, hardworking men and women. But there are some out there that we have to get rid of. If people would give me a chance, right, I would do the best I can. I will make the best decisions, right? I will not embarrass anybody. And I will do the best that I can to make it, to make our community the best there is for everyone.
Thank you. Mino, one minute.
Thank you. So we're living through one of the most difficult moments in our city's history right now. And as an immigrant who built an organization, a one million dollar organization from scratch and kept my staff employed during the pandemic, I know what it is to do the impossible. This time of crisis is also a time of opportunity. If we find the courage to imagine a new path forward, our COVID recovery has to be the chance for us to tackle racial, economic, and environmental injustice. And I am convinced that the only way that we're going to do it is by bringing our diverse communities together. Because now is the time for the Bronx to really reflect the multiracial democracy that makes us who we are. I am proud to be endorsed by the Progressive Working Families Party and other organizations such as Jewish Vote, Citizen Action, and New York Immigrant Coalition because of my commitment to our communities and our vision to move forward.
Thank you, Mino. Dan Paternak?
You're muted, Dan.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Michael and Carlton. I'm Dan Paternak and I'm running for city council. I'm born and raised in this district. I've been in the Bronx my entire life with the exception of college and law school. I have an economics degree and a law degree. I love this area. I love community service. I've been on the community board for twelve years. I chaired the board for three years and I've been the traffic and transportation chair for eight years. I'm running for city council because I love public service. I often tell people, I love government and I hate politics. And it's the truth about me. What's most important in going through this as a council member, I want to give the best constituent services within the city of New York. And for me, if elected, I will spend every hour and every minute and be persistent in everything I do in the office.
Thank you, Dan. Jessica, holler, please. One minute.
Thank you. I am running for city council because the earth is on fire and we feel it so acutely here in the Bronx. We have ignored this crisis for too long. And if anything, COVID has taught us that the air we breathe affects our health and that historic environmental racism is causing the disproportionate impacts we're seeing in deaths across this borough. We can fix this. We have the ability. We just need to elect the leadership who is fearless in taking action. I have spent my life finding answers to questions that no one has asked yet. How will my four children survive in the climate crisis that's coming? How will all of our children thrive when today the school system is failing, the housing system is failing, and the air they breathe is making them sick? They will thrive because we will stand up to the machine thinking that got us here in the first place and will make the connections between resilience and housing, sustainability and transportation and property and jobs. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Jessica. And finally, Eric Dinowitz, you have one minute to close us out.
Thanks, Michael. Thank you, Sanji. And thank you to the other candidates. I'm Eric Dinowitz. I was born, raised, went to schools here in the Northwest Bronx. Right out of college at twenty one years old, I became a public school teacher here in the Northwest Bronx for our most vulnerable children. I fought for workers' rights as a labor activist. I've been your Democratic district leader for six years, fighting for ease and accessibility in voting. I chaired the Committee of the Aging on Bronx Community Board Eight. And my, my work has been for the typically underserved, for our children, for our working families, our older adults and people with disabilities. It's the work that the UFT recognized, that Senator Jama Bailey and Congressman Espaillat all recognized in their endorsement of me. I will make sure that our community, the Northwest Bronx, has an advocate in City Hall for a recovery that works for all of us. I'm a father, teacher, community activist, who will be your voice in the city council.
Thank you, Eric. Go ahead, Sanji.
Thank you, everyone. That about wraps up our first televised city council District Eleven debate from the Riverdale Press and BronxNet. We want to thank all the candidates and you, the viewer, for tuning in tonight. The candidates will all return to BronxNet once again for a second televised debate on Bronx Talk hosted by Gary Axelbank. That debate is set to air on March fifteenth at nine P M. I'm Sanji Lopez.
And I'm Michael Hinman. We may be ending here, but stick around for just a little longer as I join students from Lehman College for a special town hall with our city council candidates here on BronxNet.
There's a special election on Tuesday, March twenty third. And if you live in any of these neighborhoods, you'll want to pay attention. Your councilman, Andrew Cohen, is now a judge, and there are five candidates looking to replace him. Whoever wins on March twenty third will join New York City's primary lawmaking body, making decisions that affect you, your family, your home, and even your workplace. Starting in twenty twenty one, New York City will use ranked choice vote. Starting in 2021, New York City will use ranked choice voting in primary and special elections for local offices. Ranked choice voting simply means that voters can rank up to five candidates in order of preference instead of casting a vote for just one. You can still vote for just one candidate if you prefer. You can learn everything there is to know about the District 11 City Council race and the candidates by visiting ballotpedia.org and riverdalepress.com. Stay informed and most importantly, make sure you mail your absentee ballot the day before Election Day on March 23rd or safely head out to the polls to have your vote count and your voice heard.
Good evening and welcome to Lehman College Student Town Hall for the candidates for the Bronx District 11 City Council seat. I'm Lehman College President Daniel Lemmons. You've just heard from the five candidates seeking to fill former council member Andrew Cohen's unexpired term. Next, you'll hear from the Lehman College student leaders who will ask questions of the candidates that are important to them. Lehman College is located in the 11th District and more than 3,500 Lehman students, faculty and staff and alumni called the 11th District home. So whoever wins this special election will be Lehman College's elected representative on the city council. It's important to note that Lehman College students vote. We don't have the data yet from the most recent election, but I can tell you that in the 2018 election, Lehman students voted at a rate that was 13% higher than the national average for college students who are eligible to vote. By the way, that national rate was 40% in 2018. That was up from 19% in 2014. But Lehman's college students care about their elected officials and they vote. Along with continuing to have a strong working relationship with the New York City Council, it's really important that our next city council person addresses the concerns of our student body. For those of you unfamiliar with Lehman College, we're the city university's only senior college in the Bronx and Hispanic-serving institution, an HSI. Over 50% of our student body of over 15,000 identifies as Hispanic. Among HSIs, we rank number one in the country for social mobility. And we're also ranked third overall among public colleges in the country for that same outcome. Our students, many of whom are essential workers, represent over 130 cultures and they're part of the foundation of the economic strength of the New York region. More than 60% of our student body lives in the Bronx and many of our students remain in the Bronx after they graduate. As the COVID-19 vaccine becomes increasingly available and the Bronx begins the long road to post-COVID economic recovery, I know our students will continue to have a very large role in that recovery. At Lehman, we're expanding our workforce and career development programs. And for this recovery and the bolstering of the work that most competitive programs at the college do, are, are doing, STEM fields, nursing, business and social work. We do that while we also address the day-to-day challenges many of our students face, such as food and housing insecurity and ensuring they have access to laptops and Wi-Fi, something that you may well know in the Bronx can't be guaranteed. We know without these basic needs met, our students will not really be in the best position to succeed. So it's with great interest that we know where the candidates stand on these issues and how they plan to work with their community partners and the Bronx's anchor institutions like Lehman College. Before we begin, I'd like to thank BronxNet and the Riverdale Press for hosting this debate and Student Town Hall. And I look forward to working with the next city council district representative.
Thank you, President Lemmons. Tonight, members of the Lehman College student community will have the opportunity to ask each of the five candidates a question. The candidates will have two minutes to answer, and then I'll ask a second candidate to respond. Joining me as co-moderator this evening is Aminata Traori, a journalism and media studies major at Lehman College.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, President Lemmons. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here with you at the Lehman College Student Town Hall with the Bronx District 11 candidates, each of which, each of whom are running for the seat left vacant by Andrew Cohen on the New York City Council in a special election on March 23rd. Thank you to each of the candidates for participating this evening. I will be asking the first question. Let's start it. Lehman College has loaned out thousands of laptop and Wi-Fi devices during the pandemic so that they could continue their studies as nearly all of our classes have been conducted remotely since March. The governor Cuomo just recently proposed a plan aimed at bridging the digital divide across the state. What will you do on the city level to bring much-needed Wi-Fi and access to laptops so that Bronx students have the basics to earn an education?
Thank you so much, Aminata. Let's start, Jessica. Jessica Holler, do you have any thoughts on this?
Yeah, I do. Uh, it'll sound familiar. Equitable distribution of resources. We need to make sure that everybody has access to Wi-Fi. We need to make sure that New York City invests in these and we need to start in the places where people would be less likely to have it on their own. We need to start in our family homeless shelters. We need to start in our, in the housing systems where people are flowing through so that kids, especially in those situations, don't fall far and further, further behind. We need to make sure that CUNY students has it, as the president mentioned. CUNY is the number one escalator of people into the middle class. The whole goal of the next decade is to grow the middle class, to give kids and students the tools that they need to succeed in the future. So it absolutely needs to be part of the infrastructure that we build. It'll help us build resilience. Uh, and we need to make sure it's distributed equitably.
Okay. Did anybody else want to jump in? Eric?
Yeah, I just, um, I'm a public school teacher, uh, public school, high, uh, high school, public school teacher for special needs students. And I saw, you know, when the pandemic started, there were a number of children that had devices. Then they got the devices and there was no internet. You know, even before that, students were relying on a TA83 calculator, which they couldn't afford to buy. Whereas there, you know, their counterparts in, in wealthier areas could. There is a digital divide and it has a direct impact on the very children that I serve every single day. I think, you know, President Lemmons mentioned social mobility, right, is, is a huge, huge part of what Lehman College does. But we have a job as a city to provide that broadband, to provide the technology, to provide the structural support so that the students, people who want to work hard, can move upward, as Jessica mentioned, you know, middle class, sustainable, middle-class, um, family.
Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Dan.
Hi, Ms. Traori. Thank you. Great question. It, it's an issue that we, we actually discussed recently at Bronx Community Board Eight, dealing with linked, you know, linked towers within the, within the city and the community. So first, um, any student that needs a laptop or an iPad shall have. And as a city council member, I'm going to do whatever I can to make sure students have those. Second, with respect to Wi-Fi, a big problem, and I know this, is students who are at home studying don't have access to Wi-Fi. So what I want to do is partner with some of the larger organizations, Optimum, uh, some of the other, perhaps Verizon, and work on getting hotspot access for students. So if you're a student in the CUNY system, you have a free hotspot access from one of those providers that you can log into and do your studies at home. Beyond that, what I really would like to see is if we can expand, you know, free Wi-Fi without the city in more locations. Um, you know, some of the towers, some people have issues with, but I think that the city of New York should focus energy on providing free Wi-Fi throughout the city, throughout our infrastructure.
Thank you, Dan. Mina.
Yeah, we need universal broadband access for everyone. I mean, we, we see how the world is, uh, needs it to survive and education very much so at this moment. So we need to be transitioning to make sure that every, we are prioritizing those neighborhoods that don't have it. There is a bill right now where we're identifying these pockets. So I'll be working as council member to make sure that we're, now that we have this data, get, let's get the data. But let's also be listening to students. We can see, we can engage our residents in this conversation. It's not always about looking at numbers, but talking to people. Let's engage with Lehman, um, and make sure that we are doing universal broadband. And in the meantime, we need to subsidize so that it's affordable.
Thank you, Mina. Carlton, do you want to add anything to this? You have to unmute yourself though, Carlton.
Yes, the digital divide has to be changed, but this is what I wanted to ask. How come we don't have that problem in any other boroughs, especially like in Manhattan? All right. That's the problem with up here in the Bronx. It's been neglected for so long. And I call out any and all representatives that we had up here. Why do we have that problem in the Bronx? We should never have had that problem in the Bronx. So I would call on all the cable companies right now, immediately, to do something about it. And as a councilman, I would go down there and I push that because all of our students should have computers like, uh, like Eric said before. And like the city, it was dysfunctional. How can you give out computers with no broadband or, or no Wi-Fi?
Thank you, Carlton.
What was it supposed to do? So yes, I get on it day one.
Thank you, Carlton. Aminata.
Thank you for your answers. Lehman College has a very active student government association. Our next question comes from one of its vice presidents, Jack Gada. What is your question for the candidates?
So much. My question for the candidate is, more than 60% of Lehman students are from the Bronx. And most of us live or work in the Bronx after graduation. With unemployment rates skyrocketing, what will you do to ensure that there will be more jobs for our recent grads so that they can support the Bronx economy recovery after the pandemic?
Thank you so much for that. Uh, let's go to Carlton first.
Okay, uh, well, well, first to let you know, since this pandemic, you know, we, we, we're in a, a heck of a problem here. You know, a heck of a situation. So, so we know. What would I do? I would try to bring as, as much, uh, uh, grants to help out our small business because our small business is the motor that really runs the city. We need to get our small businesses grants. And then, and, and, and part with them getting the grants, we have to tell them that you have to employ our students because most students, when they come out of college, do not, and it's unfortunately, they do not get the job and, and, and what they study for. So my thing would be getting the local economy going and having, having the students have some type of employment until we can do better. But that's what I would do.
Thank you, Jessica.
I've proposed something called the Bronx Pandemic Restructuring Program. We need to take advantage of the opportunity in the, of the crisis that we are in to create jobs that we need to take with us into the future. What kind of jobs are those? Well, they're green infrastructure jobs, but they're also human-to-human jobs. We understand from this crisis that we need more social workers, more healthcare workers, more teachers. We have 100,000 teacher shortage in this country that I just read about. So what we need to do is invest in the programs, work with the unions, create apprenticeships, work with CUNY to create opportunities for the, for more jobs. And the government needs to start, uh, creating the opportunities for people to come out.
Anybody else want to jump in on that? Yeah, go ahead. Eric and then Dan.
I'll say, you know, first of all, I, I think it's so valuable that as a student body, you are from the Bronx, but also that you stay in the Bronx. And, and I just, being from the Bronx myself, I, I think that's so valuable. There are a number, obviously, number of issues related to this. I think one of them is getting our younger children, uh, back in school. Because so many of the families that I talk to, so many families I work with, can't get to work. They can't even begin to think about work, working at home with their children. The children aren't at school. We need to make sure, you know, Jessica mentioned, um, apprenticeships, working with our unions and our private organizations for those apprenticeship programs integrated into our college programs. And of course, supporting our small business with a commercial rent regulation and vacancy tax.
Thank you so much, Eric. Dan?
Yeah, sure. So, you know, great question about this. One, just so you know, I've taken classes at Lehman College before. I live across the resume. When I was in college, I supplemented my, my college. I took summer classes there. In addition, before I went to law school, I took classes in the paralegal program. It's an excellent, excellent college. Lehman is one of my favorite places. Apex is also one of my favorite places, of which I've belonged to many, many years. You're a college, you know, you're a college grad. You, you need a job. You need experience, right? It's that first job getting out there. You know, one of the biggest ways to do that i- is to get an in into public in, in, into, you know, basically big, whether it's the private sector or public sector. And internships are what do that and it's connections that do that. And it's that small amount of experience. And as council member, what I would like to do is create a program and expanding on it.
Thank you so much, Dan. Thank you so much, Aminata.
Thank you. Our next question comes from Michael Eron, a junior majoring in Journalism and Media Studies at Lehman.
Good evening. Um, with the rising cost of tuition, Lehman students are forced to choose between a college education and rent. What are your plans regarding higher education as we transition into a post-pandemic economy?
Let's start with Eric on this one.
First of all, I believe, like it was many years ago, that CUNY should be free. Right? There's cost barriers, costs should not prevent people from studying what they want to do and doing what they want to do. You know, short of that, I was part of a program called the New York City Teaching Fellows. And it allowed me straight out of college at 21 years old to teach in a high-needs area, a high-needs school for a high-needs subject. And what they did was subsidize my master's degree at CUNY Hunter. Um, and I think short of being able to make CUNY free, which it should be, look at programs that subsidize people's master's degrees or undergraduate degrees for, for programs that do benefit our community here in the Bronx and throughout the city.
Thank you so much for that, Eric. Mina, did you want to add anything to that at all?
Yeah, I mean, I, I want, I, I agree. I absolutely think that, uh, CUNY should be free. Education is the most important investment we make as a society. And we can't keep putting it at the back burner. So I will be a strong advocate to make that happen. It was free and it needs to continue to be free. So we're not building debt. In addition to that, what I'll add is, we also need affordable, accessible childcare and eldercare because so many of our families, so many of my students, um, and in the Bronx this happens, you're taking care of your siblings and you're taking care of your abuela and your abuelo. And, you know, so we need to support that too and understand that young people are holding this country together and we need to do everything we can to put it in, to put them at the forefront.
Thank you so much for that, Mina. Carlton, did you have anything to add?
Yes, yes. I wanted to tell you that I would, I would wipe your debt free, all right, clear. That's the way it should be because like Mina and like Eric said, when I was coming up, uh, CUNY was, was free and all of a sudden now you have to pay for it. You said that you have to choose before, uh, uh, choose for food or go to school. It's, you shouldn't have to make that choice. All right. And with this pandemic, it made everything worse. So I would just wipe your debt, um, clear, clear and free.
Thank you so much for that, Carlton. Jessica?
And we also need the council to make smart fiscal decisions for the city. And one of the things that is clear is investing in CUNY education actually has a return on investment right back to the city. So the decision, for example, in the recent budget cuts, to pull money out of CUNY is actually working against the future of the city. So we need to, you know, we need to take those kind of numbers into account and say, we got to keep putting money in because you guys, when you come out, you spur the economy and you, there is a return directly there.
Thank you so much for that, Jessica. Dan Paternak?
Sure. Um, I, I think there's probably a little bit of a lag on that ROI, like as far as the city sees it. However, I do believe CUNY education should be free. The truth though, is they're probably not going to do it right away. So how can we, what can we do in the interim before the city council can act and the state can act to do that? And part of it, I think, is going to be, um, loan cancellation for, uh, say, public sector jobs within New York City. I think that's a big thing that we can do as a fringe benefit. Additionally, helping students with the support services that they need. If they needs, if they need subsidies for rent, let's get it to them. If they need subsidies in other areas, let's get it to them. You know, essentially free CUNY is, is a, is a great aspirational goal. I'll do whatever I can from the beginning to do that. But it's going to take time and you're going to need interim measures to help the students right now. And that's what I'll be working on for the community.
Thank you so much for that, Dan. Aminata.
David Coladé is a representative with Lehman Student Government Association. He is also managing editor of Lehman Student Newspaper, the Mary Day.
So there are many Bronx residents within the struggle, within the district who struggle to feed their families. And the pandemic has only made this problem worse. Also, a lot of mutual aid and community organizations have filled the gap in addressing a lack of resources. So what can you do in the city council to support Bronx families who are food insecure, some of whom who are Lehman College students?
Thank you so much for that, David. Let's start with, um, Mina.
Thank you, David, for that question. Um, it is unacceptable that New Yorkers and Bronxites are hungry. And we see that every day. So what we need to do, first step, we need to increase, uh, health box. We need to make sure that, uh, there is, the systems that are in place are increased. We need to partner, government needs to partner with the organizations, the grassroots organizations, the faith-based organizations that have been feeding our neighbors, that have been doing a great job supporting one another. So let's partner with them and fund them. We also need to be thinking, you know, so at the short term, make sure that every single person has the three meals a day that they need partnering. We also need to think about, in the Bronx and District 11, not unique across the city, but especially here, our residents and our community members are shopping in Balde. our residents and our community members are shopping in bodegas. You know, that's our spot. These are our jam. So how are we making sure that there are food that is healthy, that is accessible? We are subsidizing and supporting our small businesses. So we're doing two things at the same time, making sure that they are giving, they have all of the food that is needed to nourish our families. And then when we think about long-term, we need to be investing in these partnerships between government and businesses where we're at, where our community is going, and expanding community gardens, health action centers. It's something that used to exist in the city. There were 30 of them where we're educating. It's social justice spaces that are about public health. Food, once we get over making sure that every person is not hungry, because that is unacceptable, we need to then think long-term and educating and creating more opportunities. Gardens, investing in gardens, having healthier food in the schools as well. So yes, to immediate relief, expanding funds, making sure that the health bucks are expanded, the vouchers are expanded, and we're supporting our small businesses so that they get expansion too when it comes to healthy foods, which is where our community is going. There's 11 bodegas or more to every supermarket. So let's be real of where we're going and support them as well.
Thank you so much for that, Mino. Jessica?
Yeah, one of the things, and to continue on the health bucks and the bodega, we can incentivize these bodegas to have healthy food by saying you can accept more service, you can accept more service dollars if you have X percentage of healthy food. And if you are not providing, let's say, vaping materials and pipes and stuff, and move the bodegas in the right direction. And David, you're right, it is heartbreaking that our students are so hungry. What the city council doesn't have today that it absolutely should have, and I've already proposed, is a food justice committee. We have committees on the council focusing on all sorts of things. And mutual aid is wonderful, and I love bringing food down now to the two local friendly fridges. But mutual aid and friendly fridges are not, they are the Band-Aids that are coming out in this terrible time. And what we need are strong food systems. So we need to have a food justice committee focusing not just on the food systems, but on just an equitable distribution.
Thank you, Jessica. Carlton, did you want to add anything to this at all?
Yes, David, I'm sorry that, that we're all in that, in this situation. But I, I more or less, I'm a deacon at a church. And what I think, what I would do as a councilman is I would give all, all the funding necessary to the churches, the community organizations, and the grassroots organizations that are doing a job already in the community. We need to give them all the aid and funding that they can get so that people in our district that desperately need it can give it. All right, so that, that's what I would do. But I want you to keep, and, and others to keep striving on. I'm going to tell you, in my life, I have never gone hungry, but I do know how, how it feels, right? To be, to be coming up in an apartment with no heat, no hot water, you know, because I wasn't born with a silver spoon in my mouth. But you guys have been, you guys have been doing the best you can, and I'm going to continue to help, and that's what I would do.
Thank you, Carlton. Aminata?
This question comes from Alicia Rodriguez Ali, a political science major here at Lehman. Alicia?
Hi, everyone. So my question is, are there any other priorities that you have for the district that have not been discussed so far?
And let's go with Dan Paternak on, I'll start this one off.
Sure, you know, early in the debate, I, I said what my number one was, which is create more affordable housing and preserve affordable housing. And there's many ways to do that. I don't agree with what the city has done for the creation of affordable housing over the course of the last couple decades. I think what we need to do right now is focus on home ownership for low-to-moderate-income New Yorkers, particularly Bronxites. One of the greatest programs, I think, one that has lasted generations and proven to be affordable, is essentially the Mitchell Lama Program or the Limited Equity Cooperative Program. And, you know, I live just up the street from the Amalgamated Houses, which is a limited equity co-op. It's an amazing example of what affordable housing could be. And families have lived there over generations. And, you know, they don't get these astronomical rent increases. In, in the new affordable housing model of the city of New York, what they've done is create these large projects, which quite frankly, aren't affordable for most of the communities that they're built in. I, I don't approve of those. I don't want to do that. Preserving affordable housing, making sure that folks in rent-stabilized apartments, you know, have the supplements that they need when they do run into trouble. If you're a student and you need aid, I want you to be able to, to get that help from HRA. I want to make sure that you're staying in your affordable apartment, and I'm going to fight for that. I'm going to make sure that money gets there. That's a huge, huge thing for me, making sure that the housing direction that we go in is completely changed because I think we've been doing it wrong. I think our current mayor has been doing it wrong for the last seven years, and I think we need to change the model. And quite frankly, we, we talk about, you know, equitable distribution, homeownership, the ability to have equity in your home and in your community will do so much for, for, for communities that, that we have. And I think that's one thing that, that we really need to hone in on. And that, I think, for me, is going to be number one. Make sure that everybody has a, a roof over the head. For me, housing is a human right. And, and every single person should have a roof over the head and not have to worry that they might not be able to afford their rent next month.
Thank you so much for that, Dan. Eric Ginowitz?
Thanks, thanks, Michael. Thanks, Alicia. Poli sci was also, you know, one of my majors, so love that you're studying that. I, I think, you know, we touched on it earlier with education, and I mentioned that high-stakes tests are, you know, I think they, they are very detrimental to the success of our children. I talked about social emotional learning. But really using the schools as, as community centers and ways to, to teach our children what they need and bring to our community what we need. We just left the conversation on hunger, but how many students I've had come into my classroom hungry? And to watch them sneak sandwiches and milk into their bag as if they're doing something wrong. We can make it a policy that you're hungry, take some food, take some food home to your family, right? Families want to come.
Thank you. Go ahead, Carlton?
Yeah, what, one of the first things that I would like to do is, like you said, with this pandemic, we're expecting a lot of people to be evicted. But you know what I would like to do? I would, as I said earlier, what is really affordable in New York City? We don't know. So that's why I would like to start out with low income. You know, it should be based on the income you, you, you make, all right? Now, we have this thing called AMI, Average Medium Income, which they take people from the Bronx and mix it with, with Westchester. No, the AMI, right, needs to abolish for some people that's making a certain amount.
Thank you, Carlton. Thank you, Carlton. Mino, we have 30 seconds, Mino.
Yeah, okay. Well, in addition to all of the things, one of the things that is a priority for me, too, is creative youth development. It's arts, embedding arts into every single school, making sure that the clubs and the after-school programs are there, free for every single person. Also, expanding dual-language programs. It's an equity issue. So these are the two things that, in addition to education and taking school officers, police officers out of school, this is what young people have to want, and it would be a priority for me.
Thank you, Mino. So everyone, that does conclude our program. I do want to thank our co-moderator, Aminata Traori.
Thank you.
And, and also to the candidates for compelling discussion. District 11 voters now must decide who they believe deserve to become the Bronx's next city councilperson. I know you all have given them much to consider this evening. Thank you to our partners this evening, Lehman College and BronxNet. I'm Michael Hinman, editor of the Riverdale Press. If you've missed any portion of tonight's broadcast, you can find a link to it on any of our partner sites. That includes lehman.edu, riverdalepress.com, or bronxnet.org. Thank you so much, everyone, and have a good evening.
Thank you, everyone.
BronxNet is partnering with the New York City Mayor's Office to bring you NYC COVID-19 Vaccine 101, a discussion for a healthy South Bronx. Learn about the importance of getting vaccinated and how you can get involved through this interactive and informative town hall. Tune in on Wednesday, February 3rd at 5:00 PM on Channel 67 Optimum, 2133 Files, and online at bronxnet.tv.
Let's be real, getting a flu shot helps you fight the flu. Get a flu shot for yourself and those around you, too.
The views and opinions expressed in this program are those of the participants and do not necessarily reflect the views of BronxNet or the program on the writers.
Hi, and welcome to OpenBXRX, BronxNet's special coverage, providing you the latest information, resources, services, and community efforts taking place locally here in the Bronx and virtually during the pandemic. I'm your host, Sanji Lopez, and today is Tuesday, February 2nd. Coming up, we'll learn how CityMD is ready to support the emergency needs of families in Mott Haven and nearby communities with their new Mott Haven location. Then we'll discuss President Biden's 100-day deportation moratorium, what it means to Bronx immigrants, and how the executive order and organization Unlocal recently helped stop the deportation of a local Bronxite. After that, February is Black History Month. Stay tuned to learn how Dyckman Farmhouse is commemorating through a series of talks this month. And founders of the Anti-Litter Project join us to discuss how they're cleaning up the streets of the South Bronx through community-run volunteer efforts. So please, stick around. OpenBXRX starts now.